We are recording.
Curtis, has school started for you?
Thankfully, no, not yet. Teachers resume next Wednesday, and we have students the day after Labor Day.
Okay, that seems later than usual. It's nice.
It is. I deeply appreciate the extra bit of summer, especially because we had to push so much of our summer into that extra bit of summer because of the weather of summer.
Hi, Jose. I will give Steve one more minute. There's enough left to get started, so. Okay, Joe, anyone coming from your side?
Not a one tonight. No, everybody's been working triple time trying to get school open. We intentionally kept this calendar kind of late.
Great. Okay, so let's get started. I'd like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, August 22, 2024, and it is 6:01 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. The meeting is being broadcast on WillieNet TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown and will be posted to the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube page within 24 hours of the meeting as well as WillieNet.org. If we can call the role alphabetically by last name.
Bowen here.
Conry here.
Constantine here.
Elfin Byrne here.
Green here.
Ursula, absent, and Steve is currently absent. Okay, thank you. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation, resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. A public comment. We have no one signed up for public comment, and I don't see anyone from the public on the phone. We move on to approval of minutes. I will make a motion to approve the July 11, 2024 retreat minutes. Would someone like to second?
Second.
Curtis, seconds. Any discussion?
Maybe just one addition to the minutes.
Sure.
I noticed it referenced that we discussed the curriculum, a superintendent curriculum review committee. We had also discussed a review committee or the superintendent advisor committee for DBIE, and I feel like that should be in there because that's an important topic we also discussed.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments?
Oh. It looks like it looks like the curriculum review committee was listed twice. Right? Curriculum program and review, curriculum review committee. I think one of those is meant to be the DEIB.
I didn't know. I worked about that too, but the first one is about the process and the second one is about the committee. So I wasn't sure if it was meant to be two different things, but either way, yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah, good catch.
Thank you, Julia, for bringing that up. Any other discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Bowen.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes.
It looks like Steve is maybe here now.
I don't know. If I don't think that's.
I think that might be Stephen Dravis would be my guess.
So too.
I think Steve Miller was at the V.
Thank you. That's me too. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the July 18, 2024 special minutes. Anyone like to second that? Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda, the FY 2025 Annual Overview of Business Items. I do want to say I really appreciate the links within the document. That was pretty awesome. Thank you for that suggestion, Carrie.
All right, so we have an annual overview annually of the items that are expected to appear on our agendas and estimates for when they appear on our agendas, along with the projection of when or two town meetings are to vote our budget for next year. So as you read down through this, most things are consistent with recent years. We do have some notes about, for instance, the potential conflict of concerts at Mount Greylock on the what would normally be the date of October 10th as the second Thursday in October. We are proposing that we shift that meeting to October 17th. We're trying to get earlier and earlier in the cycle to try to avoid any conflicts, but we were certainly not perfect in that regard. So this is one suggestion here, and I think, Christina, it's a question for the committee as to whether or not the 17th can work. In addition to that, we have some refinement that we've done around trying to standardize on timelines for annual approvals and updates, all within the laws and within norms for other school committees. But aside from that, I don't think there's anything too significant here, but Christina and Carrie can certainly interject if that's not the case or if I'm forgetting anything. One other change is this does have a vote on it here tonight. We have, we have learned that at least some, some sources that we work with over the course of the year really like to see a voted annual calendar. So we are hoping to have a motion to approve this, this annual overview of regular business items as presented or as amended here tonight.
So I just have a question of how committed to ourselves and to the public we are to each of these. Like if we were to vote it tonight and then decide later to move something around, do we need to revote it? Or?
Would we just need to re-vote to move something rather than to re-vote? You know what I'm saying? The entire? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like it used to be like when we were doing, so when the superintendent and the chair and the vice chair and they assistant superintendent, we're all doing agenda planning, there would be this discussion of, well, this is on the annual calendar for this month, but maybe we should postpone that to next month. Would there be the flexibility to do that if we vote this calendar and then is that a commitment to have those items? Because sometimes things just aren't ready when, when they're on the annual. So to me, it's, it's like a a commitment to being guided by and to making sure that these things are all addressed, but not necessarily when we currently say that they're going to be addressed. I didn't know if everyone else felt that way.
Julia?
I, I just want to note that at the top, it does say agenda items on this master calendar are reasonably anticipated. Items may be moved to another date as necessary. I think that gets at the spirit of what you're saying, Carrie, and if that's there, I feel confident. If this should be voted on, I feel confident voting on this and then allowing those of you who plan the agenda to make, move things as needed.
And legally, we don't have any, there are no legal concerns there either. I, I think mostly it's that some organization, like our bond council, honestly, was, was the one that asked the question, can we see a copy of your regular calendar of events as voted by your school committee? I think they just want to make sure that, you know, that they might interact with some organizations where the board really has no sense of what it needs to do on an annual basis, which is certainly not the case here, but it's, it's a checkbox that they, you know, that they need to check off. And ours certainly has all of those things that they need to see that we do.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the FY 2025 Annual Overview of Business Items as presented?
So moved.
Julia moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Carrie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you, Joe. Next up on the agenda is the, hold on, let me move back to my. Boy, I broke things. Okay, I'll go back to paper. This is why I print things too. Is the school committee and interim superintendent goals process. Joe, do you want to kick this off and then I can jump in?
This, this is an annual item. This is it's, it's a, it's a bit modified in this year in that given that you have an interim superintendent. Some places would indicate that interim superintendents don't necessarily have goals of their own because they don't have all of the same evaluation and responsibilities to district improvement plans that, that superintendent who will have a longer tenure often has. At the same time, we're a district that is stable with the team and a school committee and an interim superintendent who I'm interested in continuing us along a process towards the goals that really were laid out in front of us by the district improvement plan, by the administrative team that you have. So I would like to see us set goals and achieve them in, in the same way that we, that we otherwise would have. So I think that's the starting point for the conversation and then we can, if that sounds amenable to folks, we can figure out what the process is that we want to use over the next couple of months to, to do that and then to see how we've done at the end of the year.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense. And I know that in past conversations, we have talked about making sure that the school committee goals align with all of those goals that you just mentioned. And I will always throw in the Julia mantra of measurable, measurable goals. So if we can just keep that in mind. So does this become, you know, a discussion later on? I know in our calendar that we just presented, we had goals, goals set for, I think it was December. So. Curtis?
In, in thinking ahead, both in terms of the, the interim superintendency and the meeting agenda, I find myself wondering how much our decision on the length of the hiring search process should in and would inform upon the goals crafted by an interim superintendency all, all together. You know what I mean? Like if we need to answer that question before the goal-setting scope can be established.
Yep, I agree. Carrie?
I'll counter that, just thinking that it, to me, it almost doesn't matter what the length of the time is that in this particular situation, whether it's one year's worth of goals or two years' worth of goals, I think it would be rather than having the superintendent present the goals and then making sure the school committee goals are aligned, it would make sense, kind of like what we started to do in the retreat, to all work on goals together for the district and then figure out what are the interim superintendent, what is the interim superintendent's role in this and what is the school committee's role in this? But to just have shared goals for whether it's a one-year or two-year plan, but I think we can talk about the process and then certainly the length of the interim superintendency would inform the goals, absolutely.
And I would certainly volunteer to, between now and the September meetings coming up awfully, awfully close because of the the later in the month nature of this meeting, but in the October meeting probably to have prior to that communicated a draft set of what I believe are attainable goals and metrics to go alongside them for the district, and that might be a jumpstart for the conversation of how does that break apart into school committee and interim superintendent type goals.
Great, sounds good. Julia, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I was curious about timing, so I appreciate you clarifying that, Joe, because the this, what we just voted on says the school committee goals are in December, but I think the superintendent goals are earlier. And my guess is that we could, I, I want, I like the idea of Joe coming back to us with, you know, the specific goals and the metrics. But I, my guess is we also kind of know the categories now, and I feel good about those. And, you know, it's around the DEIB work and the curriculum review work, the things that we've been talking about. So I, I feel good like waiting to get the exact metrics, knowing that that important work is getting started already anyway. So I just wanted to say that out loud. And obviously cellphone, you know, like digital policies and stuff like that might be part of the goals to other, other work, but those two really big areas I know are already starting anyway.
And I would say the overarching goal of all of those goals is to put us in a better position for a superintendent search moving forward. So it's like, it's good for the district, but also good for the way the district is presenting itself to potential superintendent candidates.
Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, are we ready to move on to the next item? Okay, appointment of district secretary, which will be the interim superintendent, and just to bring clarity on this because it may feel like we just appointed the district secretary, but we, we appointed Jake as the district secretary. So now we need to make sure we have somebody in place to, sorry about this right here, to get some of the work done that we need to get done. So I would like to make a motion to appoint our super interim superintendent as our district secretary. Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second it, but I also want to just clarify because we just had this discussion. It's all seems very confusing and necessarily so, but typically we would appoint the district secretary at the November meeting when we do our reorganization. And then in May, we would appoint the treasurer and an assistant treasurer, the, those other positions. Let me actually see. Annual appointment of treasurer and assistant treasurer and authorization of treasurer to borrow. So for the calendar, the annual business calendar, we moved all of those appointments to June to set us up for the next fiscal year. So we won't be revoting the secretary, the district secretary in November, which is when we typically would vote the district secretary. Because we're voting it now, we're going to vote it again in June. And we're going to vote those other ones in June, and then we're going to set ourselves up for just an annual vote in June and no longer in November for the district secretary. So that's just a change that we made in the, in the annual calendar. So in other words, this is good until June.
Thanks for that clarification, Carrie.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so we, I made a motion and Carrie seconded. Any other discussion on this appointment and this motion? Okay, all in favor?
Bowen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin Byrne, aye.
Green, aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, superintendent search process discussion. We touched on the beginnings of what this process would look like in our retreat. And I think, I mean, we had some very productive conversations around this. So we can continue that discussion. I'm happy to make a motion based on what I believe we talked about, and then we can have further discussion, but that's up to you. We can chat now and make a motion or what, what is the process that the committee would like to follow here? Jose?
Thanks, Christina. It certainly would help me if we could just briefly summarize what we are about to consider, like what are, what are the options around the table and then to get a sense of of what, what might get moved.
Yep. So there's actually a.
Yep, could I also add to that? I agree, but could we also add to that? Who joined us for our retreat and what the nature of that conversation was? Thanks.
Yeah, so we, during our retreat, we, we met as a committee with Joe and with Glenn Kutter and Liz LeFond of MASC. They have helped us in the past with our superintendent search processes. They brought a wealth of knowledge with us and we peppered them with questions about the length of superintendent searches, the ideal timing for superintendent searches, and what might be the best process for our district and the unique challenges of, of our district. So. Let's see. We talked about the difference between a one-year process, which would start in November, I think. Is that right? Can't remember when the cycle starts. If it's, I think it starts in November. And so if we did a one-year process, it would be November. It would start in November and we talked about what that might look like and then what a two-year process would talk, would, would look like. The two-year process, as we talked about it, might set us up to really represent ourselves like as a stronghold. So here are our district goals. Here, here is all the information. It allows us a little more time to have, I don't remember what we called them, like parent talk sessions and a little more community input on what a search process would look like and what the ideal candidate would look like. So we talked about that. Listening tours is what we talked about. Sorry, I couldn't think of that word. Anyone else? What am I forgetting? Do you guys want to add to this? We were all there.
Yeah, I think the, the other thing we talked about was the work that we are going to be engaging in around the curriculum development and the equity audit and the fact that there would be two school committee members on each of those superintendent ad hoc advisory committees, sorry. And that were we to start the search process this year, we would have school, school committee members serving on three pretty significant committees in addition to the work that we're already doing. So we would add a superintendent search committee to those other two committees, and that seemed like it might be, it might lean us toward taking the two years to do, to get this work done this year and then to engage in the superintendent search process the following year might be better timing for both the district and for the school committee in general. So that was one of the things that played into it. And we also talked about Joe's interest or willingness in serving for more than one year. And Joe, I think you would need to, to weigh in on that. Let us know your current thinking on that, but that was certainly part of the, the discussion.
Julia?
I just want to add one more thing is that this is an election year as well, and I don't know what, who all is running, but there was a question around, we may have a different makeup of the school committee.
From what I saw in an article that I read, I think in I Berkers is, it's going to be the same committee because the only people who took out papers are the people who are currently.
Nevermind, I have to see that article. I've been traveling. I didn't see that. Okay, then.
No worries. Jose, did you want to add something? And I, I, if I could say this, and if you guys are uncomfortable with this, this is fine, but there are so few of us right now on screen. I, you don't have to raise your hands. You can just talk.
I'm so easily programmed into school classroom.
I know. I know. It's just like, just like, it's, it's okay. You can just say. And, but definitely raise your hand if you feel like I'm ignoring you.
I didn't know if, Joe, if you wanted to respond to Carrie's question, then I might, you know.
Sure. My, my highest priority, greatest hope, the thing that I really want to make sure is that you all make a, I don't want to put any pressure on you, but I want you to make a good decision. And I want you to have the best suite of candidates as you possibly can have. And so to me, that's, that's the thing. And that should be how you drive your conversations. I will happily serve you for one or two years in this role. I think I know the kind of roadmap that I would need to lay out for the district, but also for myself under either of those circumstances at this point. So I, I just want you to make the best, have the best group of candidates available and make the best decision that you can. And I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I can certainly respond to questions about that.
Yeah, and to, to add on to what Carrie was saying, one of the things that we talked about is by creating the two ad hoc committees and really digging into that work this year, we are, we are setting up a plan that has some legs to it for, for the next superintendent, which, which could be really appealing to quite a few candidates to have, to have those legs before they, before they get started versus, you know, it sort of being a, still being a moving target, not totally a moving target, but less of a, less of a, you know, a base. Jose, did you want to add something? Or Carrie, I thought I heard something.
I'm happy to wait, or. I'm happy to wait or just, just pipe in. No, I think um. Uh, at the retreat, I'm trying to remember how, what, what I articulated, but I was trying to articulate concerns around a two-year search. Um, I think there's the worry that we, you know. Our ideal candidate is out there right now looking for an opportunity, like, you know, to work in a district like ours. Um, so there's that anxiety about missing out on that person who, you know, who's, who's ready to, to make a move. Um, I really, you know, the, the listening sessions and the ensuring that we. Provide ample opportunity for community feedback resonates with me. I'd like to couch that though with this uh, you know, belief that, you know, we. Um, very recently had a superintendent that I think we all were really excited to have lead our district. You know, whose qualities, whose attributes, whose goals for our district resonated with us. Um, a person. That our community, I would say, resoundingly really supported. Um. And who delivered goals or, or at least, you know. Articulated goals for our district that I think, I think resounded as well. And so. I don't think we need to start from scratch. I think we know what we're looking for. I think we know who we are and I think we know. Who we aspire to be and, you know, I think there's a, there's a lot that we have to work with. All that said, you know, acknowledging the significant work that certainly these two subcommittees are going to be engaged in. Um, you know, what Carrie brought up, that, that resonates with me as well, the concern that we're just overtaxing. You know, a volunteer committee, those of us who are just volunteering our time for this and, and, and aiming to do our best for, for the district. Um, that does resonate with me and, 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 you know, it would certainly makes me more open. To the idea of prolonging or um, engaging in a, committing to a two-year search. Before I could uh, whatever motion is, is moved. Uh, whatever gets moved, I would love to hear uh, from Joe. What he really needs as our interim superintendent. Um, I would like to provide as much support to Joe. You know, professionally and, and given, you know, the sacrifice that this take, assuming this role. Will likely have for him and his family, you know, should we be open to. An interim assistant superintendent of sorts, you know, we just identified one for Williamsburg Elementary. Um, you know, there could be someone within our district now who could assume this role or, or elements of this role. Um, I do worry that Joe serving basically. Doing two jobs over the course of two years is, is just, is unfair. Um, and unsustainable even over the course of 24 months. So that, that's a real concern that I have about a, a two-year search.
The, my quick response to that is that if. If it were to be two years, I would very happily identify. A way to carve out what would probably be a finance and business. Operations oriented role um, and identify somebody who could. Grow into that role and, and who I, I would hope would become a, a long-term part of the district. Um, I think there are a variety of ways that that could work out. I think it would be very healthy. Um, I think that's probably more likely than an interim assistant superintendent. Um, but I, I, I do feel as though if it was two years, I would feel comfortable working. Now on a plan for what kind of a role that could, that could take and, and also making sure that it was the type of thing where. Within our area, we could potentially have somebody be interested in it who's talented, capable of all of that. And interested in being with the district for the long haul, so I, I. I would approach, I would approach to, to put it a different way, I would approach a single year as just. Sprint for a single year. I would approach what would become like a, a two-year, year and a half. Type role in, in one that, that was a little bit more methodical about. How to, how to build um, and how to fill gaps. So in some ways that the two-year is actually a little bit. Um, less wearing, I would say, uh, in some ways. So certainly there are other ways where. Um, where it's not, but that, that's how I think about it.
And um, Jose. What I think Glenn and Liz were saying is once we agree to any search. It becomes broadcast that we will be looking for a full-time superintendent. You know, within two years. So if I think, and I could be wrong about this, Carrie, maybe you know a little bit more, but I think if. The perfect candidate showed up, we could, we could address. Like how to handle that situation if it arose, but it sounds like right now isn't the most ideal time. To start looking, um, but it will get broadcast that in fact, you know, Mount Greylock Regional School District is looking for. A permanent superintendent. So one thing, I guess. We could make a motion, if this makes sense, we can make a motion to um, commit to a two-year superintendent search. And um, I, and perhaps Joe could commit to coming back in September with. A more structured plan.
Um, so it's not a two-year search, it's taking an extra year before embarking on the search.
Right, right.
Right, so I think the motion would be to begin. To bring the search in the fall of 2025. Formally begin it. In the fall of 2025. That's giving ourselves. One year to get this work done and then. The following year we would focus. More, uh, with more intent on the search, yeah. Sorry, Julia, were you?
I was gonna say that, I was gonna say that, but also um. I think it's actually really important if we, if we vote to do that, we aren't. Quietly also open to somebody showing up because I feel like we need to commit and move. In a, in a consistent way. Um, both commit to Joe, commit to whoever he might bring in as an interim. Um, for the period of time that we say, so. Um, a- and, and Jose, when you mentioned earlier, you thought. Uh, you, I share with you, I don't want to miss someone, but I'm also pretty sure I heard. Glenn and Liz say that they don't know of at least the specific Massachusetts. Perfect superintendent who's about to become available, and I think maybe giving it another year gives us. Um, there, there's, I mean, it's going to be a pool of people either in one year or in two years and so. Or, you know, this coming year or the year after that, so. It's the same, to me, it's the same thing.
If, if I could just, just follow up with the question for those that have hired superintendents in the past. Um, you know, from when the clock hits start to the point someone, you know, signs a contract, what, what does that process look like? And um. You know, what are the, you know, in terms of time commitments or, or, you know. The ways that the, the school committee is asked to serve and play a role in that process.
So we have that in the packet, there's a whole um, document on the superintendent search, but. In general, there's a committee, there are, there, there's the time that goes into. Putting the advertisement together, putting together the description of the district. Um, posting everything, uh, receiving applications, you know, it's like any search, you've been on searches before, but. You really want to. Be careful and, and deliberate in how, we want to be careful and deliberate in how we are describing ourselves and. Who we are, where we're headed, what our vision is for the district for the next, you know, five or so years. Um, and we want to advertise very broadly, we want to make sure we're marketing to. Um, you know, as many candidate pools as possible, but I think as Christina said. Um, the MASC, they do a lot of these searches and there are just. So many vacancies right now and there were so many vacancies last year. Um. If anything, you know, um, one of the things that I was thinking about is if I were a superintendent. At a school and I was thinking, well, you know. I, maybe I want to do another year or two at this school, but then I'll be ready to move on. This is a district that, you know, maybe I would start thinking about, but there was no rush, like, you know, I wouldn't have to. You know, leave my district right away when we're in the middle. So there may be candidates like that, but there are just a. A huge number of vacancies right now. Um, and you know, there's a reason for that. Not a lot of people are going into the superintendency. Um, not a lot of principals are moving from building leadership to district leadership. Um, there. Um. There's a lot of turnover. Um, unfortunately, in the superintendent positions, they become very political. Um, budgets are tight, you know, all the issues and then some that we've been facing are being faced by other districts as well. So the more we can do to put our house in order. And to do the work that we know we need to do now. Um, the better position we'll be in. Um, find the kind of leadership that we need to find. That's just how I feel. I do understand who they, your concern about. Well, what is that? What does that say to the parents in our district? You know, what does that say to um, the kids in our district who are worried about? Leadership, um, but I feel pretty good about our leadership. Right? I mean, I feel very good about our district leadership right now and our building leadership and. The committee is solid and. Um, I, I feel like a search this coming year would just be very destabilizing for us. Given everything else that we need to do. So um, I just see it as a smart thing to, to take the time and really. You know, do the work. Um. Now, we could talk to. The MASC further about, you know, what are the, what, what is some of the specific work that we could do over the course of this year? That would put us in a better position for a candidate search in the following year. We could certainly continue to have those conversations. Julia and I are both going to the MASC conference. In November and we will talk to um, you know, our colleagues in, across the state. Um, to see what it is that they would recommend. Um, so I, I do think it gives us a little breathing room, it gives us the time to. Do the work that needs to be done and it gives us um. More lead time to present ourselves as we really want to be presented. But going back to, sorry, that didn't really address your, your question. Just, you know, there is a, there's the, you know, initial candidate pool and then um, that is currently all done in executive. Session, I think there is a move to make the initial screening um, a more open process or to maybe let the. The school committee participate in that initial screening rather than just the. Um, the, the search committee, um, the search committee typically involves. Um, you know, community members, parents, um, sometimes um, a student. And like someone from student council. Um, and teachers, um, school, yeah, I think I said school community members, so.
Town managers.
What's that?
I said town managers have been involved in the.
They, they can be, yeah, they have the option to be. Um, and so um, this, and then the, the, the last part of the process is that the candidate. Interviews are public. Right? So that is what the public will remember from the search process is that the finalist interviews. They're given a chance to notify their districts that they're finalists, the interviews are public. Um, and there is an opportunity for the community to meet the candidates, usually they're, let's say there are three. Um, and they would come to the district, the committee, the search committee mi- members have the opportunity to go to their districts. And talk to the people uh, where they're currently working. Um, and then the deliberation is also public. And the decision is public. So once you get past that initial process of screening candidates and, and bringing it from like eight to three. Everything becomes public.
Thanks, Carrie. Um, and you know, uh, uh, much of what you shared honestly really does resonate with me. Um, you know, trying to recall what motivated um. The, you know, my thinking and, and what I shared at our, at our retreat. Uh, you know, this is escaping me at the moment. I, I do believe and do know. That Joe has built, you know, tremendous trust across uh, our community and communities. Um, we are, you know. We are lucky to have Joe in our district, leading our district. Um, this question, I, I maybe is, is for this, for, for, for us. Um, Joe has uh, expressed. Um, a need that he has for him to assume a two-year, to take on this role over two years. What, is there something that we need to do as a school committee? Um, to, to help him find someone to support the work. That, that he's doing now, or is that something that we, we look into at a later date, once Joe has a, a clearer idea of how to.
I think we need to be willing to approve the budget for it. That's, that's our job is to, to approve the money. Um, and Joe is, he knows what he needs and he'll, he'll find the people that he needs and. Obviously, if we know of people, then we should let him know, but. Um, I think it's, it's the money that he'll need.
And I, um, maybe further to that point. We've already approved a budget that includes a superintendent and an assistant superintendent. So do we need to approve anything as long as it's within the budget that we've already approved?
We, we would. The, anything that I would bring forward would take the current budget into account and view it as the critical. Finance document record and anything that we would do for next year. Would come off the basis of. You know, the, the starting point would be that we'd have both an assistant superintendent and the superintendent. Because that's the way this budget was built. Um, so it's not as though we need to. Add additional funds for a new, you know, for, for something entirely new. Um, but I would all, I, I would, I would definitely keep all of you very up to date with whatever, whatever the plan would be. Um, so that's the. Multifaceted answer.
Yeah, it's interesting, Jose, your, your question because I think about if Joe were our permanent superintendent. I would be like, you, it's, our job is to hire you and your job is to figure out the rest of it. Um, and so my, my leaning is to do that now, except that. This is where we have to, like, do we need to think about it a little bit differently because Joe is interim? Um, do we need to think about that, like, very clear line any differently? And we're fortunate in that Joe understands. All the jobs, so I would absolutely be just like, if you think that's going to work, you, you know. I don't know how I would know any differently or know any better.
If no one could tell, I was pantomiming the putting on and taking off of several hats when you said that. I don't know how that translated on the screen, but.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion? For the school committee to commit to a one-year superintendent search process starting in the fall of 2025?
So.
I'll second.
Curtis moves, Julia seconds. Any further discussion on that?
Again, I think there might be work that we can engage in this year that isn't part of an active search. But is work in addition to the, you know, the ad hoc committees and the the work that we're doing um, in our regular business and. Um, you know, we can find out more about that.
Yeah, and I.
Couple of months.
I think we can look at and work with Joe, and I know we've talked about this before, as they're. Reimagining the district website and realigning all of these pieces. We can make sure that the information we're presenting. Um, is clear and concise and helpful to a potential candidate. Um, I know we want to do that even more broadly to for, you know. Incoming families and incoming teachers and uh, so any of that work um, will be beneficial.
There were two sort of motivations, I think, that were offered. Uh, for. For going this route, um, one of which was to, you know, given just to acknowledge the the tremendous work that the committee is going to be. Conducting as a part of, you know, the two new subcommittees. Um, and the important work that they'll be doing. So it's to give, to provide some bandwidth for the for school committee members to do this work. In a way that doesn't compromise that work and also doesn't compromise a a search. The other element that was brought up or the motivation that was brought up was uh. To provide an opportunity for us to listen and learn from the community. Who is responsible for that? How will that information be collated? How that information be used? And who is ultimately accountable? I think those are big questions that I think many people are going to be asking.
So I think that's a really good question, and it is something we talked about a little bit in the retreat that we could be doing this now. And there are many commu- there are many school committees that hold public forums, you know, they call the. You know, if there's an issue um, that the that the community is concerned about, or if there's something that the. The committee wants to present or the administration wants to present, we can call a meeting, a public forum. It would be a meeting, it would be a public meeting, we would open it, but then. We don't have to run it like a meeting. We could run it, um, let's say if it were in person. We could um, do breakout sessions and just have discussions in small groups and have a school committee member at each table kind of thing. Uh, we could also have breakout rooms on Zoom or, um, you know, that kind of thing. Um, so that's one way to do it. And another way to do it is to commit as individual school committee members to. Um, hold office hours or coffee hours and talk to the community. Um, or if you're at a game, you know, to make it known in advance that. You're there to, you know, you're there, obviously you're there mostly to watch your kid, but. If there's an opportunity to have thirty minutes where you're talking with people and just, you know. Engaging in conversation about the district and gathering information in an intentional way so that. It's not just, oh, hey, I'm here, but I'm going to be here at this time and in this place, and if you want to talk about. Issues in the district, I would love to hear from you. And then. There has to be a way for us to kind of report back to each other. Um, I don't know if it's a standing item on a school committee meeting, um, or if there's just a way to. Um, collect the information if there's like, if goes to the district, you know, the district um, secretary and it gets collected and it puts in. Gets put into a folder, things like that. But yes, um. We we need to be out there and listening and asking folks, you know. What they're thinking and what they're thinking also about, I mean, we could hold public forum. For about district leadership, you know, what is the future of district leadership? What are the issues that you're concerned about? Who should we be looking for? You know, it could be that broad. Or it could be much more specific and directed to particular topic.
Can I make a proposal, Carrie, listening to you? I, could we? So and 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 just also circling back to your point earlier, Carrie, that you and I are going to the, and and anyone else who wants to go, but to the. Um, M A S C conference where we will, um. I'm sure there's going to be a session on recruiting your superintendent. Um, sure, there will be sessions specific to this, but I know there's also a lot of networking time. And so. I guess my proposal for myself, and I wonder if anyone wants to join me in this, is between now and November, when that session is. I will host um, at least one coffee hour in town, in my town, in Williamstown. Open, you know, for anyone to come by and share with me their, like, I will do that. I will have specific intentional meetings to listen. Um, but then at that session. Carrie and I, and Carrie, now that I'm dragging you into this commitment, you and I will walk away with a proposal for how we will listen. Um, and gather community input between December and June. Does that, and and.
Sounds good, yeah.
Cause I'm like, I'm gonna hold myself accountable to the coffee, um, and I encourage others to do the same. Um, and then uh, you can, the committee here and the public who's listening can hold Carrie and I accountable. Um, for a a suggested plan for listening going forward.
And I think, I don't know how, um, like. I know we talked about this, there's a select board member who does this, you know, it could be as simple as, you know, uh, picking a popular time for people to go. To one of the coffee places and putting a table tent up saying, I'm a school committee member, come talk to me. Um, you can advertise in advance on social media, you can email, you know, your your listeners or whatever. Just say, you know, I'll be here. Would love to hear from you.
Or if we all did it, couldn't go out in a school, could have gone to school newsletter via parent square.
Yeah, if we know when and where, yeah, we could set up a schedule. You're muted, Jose.
Yes, sorry, just uh. It'll be, Williamstown, I think, most recently conducted a community survey. Motivated, you know, by a number of important and and hard issues that our our community faced, faces. One of the concerns, I think, from that survey is that it wasn't truly inclusive of, you know, the broad swath of our community. And uh, many voices that I would argue we don't often hear from at school committee meetings are probably all, we probably also won't hear. During, you know, other types of community events and. I'm not an expert in in this, so I I don't have much to offer, but I would would hope that, you know, if if we do learn. Of a of a means by which we can be inclusive in our uh. Community sessions, community listening sessions or fora, I I I would hope that, you know, we we took advantage of those. Um, and it could be that, you know, it might have to be multifaceted, you know, coffee hours. Online surveys, I'm not sure what that looks like. I think what I'm convincing myself of is if we're serious about this. We we might need to. Ask for some support, uh, and expertise and from from folks in our community who can help us. Yeah, I certainly could use it.
I like that.
We should let people know also that the school committee email has changed. So it's, what is the school committee email now?
The 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 old address will still work, so if anybody.
It will, okay.
Need documents where it is.
Okay.
But the but the new is just schoolcommittee@mgrsd.org. The old was schoolcommittee@mgrhs.org. Anything sent to that email address will still go to all of you the same.
Yeah, and you know, we could say now and um. Publish this um, on whatever, you know, accounts we have, uh, that anytime anyone wants to send us their thoughts. On future district leadership. They can always send it to either that school committee address or to us as individual school committee members, and then we have to. Commit to collating it and making sure that we don't lose track of the input and the feedback that we're getting.
Thing else that I'll offer up here, just because I I think it dovetails nicely with the things that we've been working on over the summer, which is we've. We've put our heads together as a team trying to figure out how to increase participation in all kinds of parent and community. Focused events around the district. Um, our conversations have ranged from utilizing parent square in different ways. Um, to should we start to consider the um. The series of signs in front of school buildings that that include upcoming events that every time somebody drives by or or pulls up. Um, that 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 information is there. We've talked about increasing the amount of paper going home in backpacks and. The positives and negatives, the many negatives there, but we're but we're trying to tackle what to me is is a very. Very challenging but worthwhile problem within the district, which is. Increasing parent involvement in everything that that we do. Um, and so I think that having some intertwining between what all of you were talking about, how you go about. Um, conducting events and promoting them and trying to get people interested in coming out. Um, we we are doing the same thing uh, with all other aspects of school district function, so. We we should certainly cross paths and and share that as we go to.
Yeah, I wonder, you know, being one of the few, if not the only um, school committee member without a kid in the district now. I wonder about setting up a a table at all. School events, right? For the school committee and having a suggestion box or a feedback box or an opportunity for people to just. And we, that we can kind of divide and conquer, so. If someone's going anyway, um, you can have something identifying you as a school committee member, because not everybody knows who's on the school committee. And just saying, talk to me, right? It's like what we did with the building committee. Um, we were just like everywhere, all all at once, you know, with. Something identifying ourselves as people who had information about. This would be. Getting feedback. This would be engaging in conversations.
We need swag buttons that say, I'm a Mount Grit. I'm I'm your Mount Gray Life School Committee friend. Ask me a question.
I was thinking of sash, but.
Well, more could fit on this app. We could even send a email on the sash. I like that idea. Okay, so we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constancia, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda, policy subcommittee. I get to go mute and Jose gets to go unmute.
I I think you were passing the baton, is that right, Christina?
Yes.
Sure, all right, well, I get to pass it. I could to pass it on myself. Um, we've got five uh, policies that are listed as discussion items. Um, following the discussion, uh, the policy and governance subcommittee will consider any feedback we receive today. And in between today and and our our next subcommittee meeting. Um, and with the expectation, uh, well. With the possibility that these these will appear as as action items um, at our next full committee meeting. Uh, Joe, could you just, as a a brief sort of introduction? And remind us why these uh, five policies are uh, on the docket tonight?
Sure, uh, they all first appeared as M A S C recommended updates to technology-related policies in December of twenty twenty three. Um, so we started working on them in the in the spring. Um, they all relate to the ways that students, staff and families interact with technology in. In the various forms, um, how the district offers a website, what it means for. Um, there to be a district-sponsored social media account, who can. Um, who can administer that and under what, under what rules? Um, how students interact with uh, technology within our school buildings. What what will be provided to them, what kind of rules they need to follow, what kind of acceptable use. Um, we need people to abide by uh, students and staff. Um, so these policies cover all of that. They represent both a rearranging of existing policy. Based on the way M A S C had recommended that school districts start to realign their policies. Um, but also a simplification in in some aspects of of ways that we had policies that. Um, blended policy and procedure in the past in ways that re- really they ideally should not. Um, so there is some simplification here to keep policy where it should be and to move procedure where it should be. Um, so it's, and and none of these have changed since that first read. In uh, May or June, whenever that was.
A lifetime ago.
Yeah, can I ask a question and and make a comment on our previous conversation? Looking at these reminds me that it was recommended that we have a district social media presence. Right? That isn't a school building. This is, this came from a M A S C. Um, some, the summer institute that I went to, um, they said that it's 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 recommended in order to put your. Um, information out there um, to the public that the. Like, each of our buildings has a social media presence, but our district does not, and so this would be district information and school committee. Information, and it's also an opportunity to kind of. Make a statement if there are rumors circulating around that we just want to clarify. Um, so I would just, it's not relevant to the policies, but I just didn't want to forget to mention it. My question is. Where it says superintendent. Can we just read in our minds interim superintendent every time we see superintendent in a policy?
Yeah, the the legal, the legal way is but that my title is interim superintendent. The role that I'm serving is as superintendent.
Superintendent, okay.
The states concerned, they they say superintendent. Within policies, it says superintendent. Um, so it's title versus role is the differentiation.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks, Carrie, and thanks for the reminder of, you know, of uh, you know, something that we we need to be considering as a school committee and as a. As a district. This is the the time of the hour where I get to uh, ask our our favorite, I don't know if it's a baritone or or what what that voice is, but it's. It's gold. It is certainly solid gold, that voice. Thankfully, for him, uh, the older policies are a lot longer than the the new policies. I think we'll just ask Curtis if it's okay. Just to kind of read through the new iterations of of the policy. Are you okay with that, Curtis?
I am so glad you said that.
Oh, my goodness, already. Uh, all right, so first up is uh, policy I, J, and D, access to digital resources.
Proposed new. The school committee supports the rights of students, employees, and community members to have reasonable access to various information formats and believes it is incumbent upon users. To utilize this privilege in an appropriate manner. The school committee intends to support such use with appropriate budgetary allocations, providing for timely updates to technology as necessary. The superintendent, in conjunction with the director of technology, shall develop and implement appropriate procedures to provide guidance for access to digital. Resources. Should I read the note regarding FCC regulations?
I don't know. I don't think it's part of our our. Um, and I'll I'll highlight the lack of punctuation, at least in the version of the. Of the policy that I can see that we need to amend, but um, any any thoughts or questions? Julia?
Um, sorry, this is uh, not specifically related to this policy, but the sharing settings do not allow people outside of MGRS. D to see them and given, so I just want to. At least that's what I'm seeing, and so that just will need to be amended.
The, I I'm pretty sure the packet. And the public-facing packet has PDFs of all of these.
Oh, the pu- okay, all right, got it. So the links alone are just, okay, got it, thanks.
Yep, so all all of it is, and and if anybody out there can't access, please uh, let me know. But what I'm seeing right now is is that it's all um. Media.
Thanks for raising that, Julia, and thanks for for clearing it up, Joe. Looks like Ursula, yeah, mark that, what is that, at seven oh nine, or others joined us? Whoever's taking notes. Hey, Ursula. You 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 tuned in in time, but Carrie, did you have a question?
Oh, I was just wondering, what is um, is that an actual title, the um director of digital or director of technology? Or is it digital technology in in our district?
Um, we use the title Director of Academic Technology.
Academic. So can we uh revise that to read Director of Academic Technology or?
Our, I I, we had asked that question of our um of our legal counsel. Um, and and he had suggested that that we actually keep it as is because it allows. Um, it allows for more flexibility if you change titles. So whoever is filling a role of what people would perceive as being Director of Technology. Will will work, but we can also change it and we just need to update the policy if we updated the position potentially. So I I either way, I think it works is what I'm saying.
Julia may have a question. I wanted to give you a moment. Okay. Ursula, I think. No, all good. Apologies. Yeah, just wanted to make sure. All right.
You are muted, Jose.
I just sung a tune there, Curtis. It was a lovely tune. Uh, I was gonna say, I couldn't see you all. And if anyone had a comment about this particular policy, please interrupt me. Um, but I believe we're ready to. Hear policy I, J, and D B, Use of Technology in Instruction.
Proposed new. The school committee recognizes the need for students to be prepared to contribute to and excel in a connected global community. To that end, the district provides ongoing student instruction that develops digital citizenship skill sets. Information and communication technology are an integrated part of the curriculum across subjects and grades in developmentally appropriate ways. And are aligned with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, including seeking knowledge and understanding, thinking critically and solving problems. Listening, communicating, and interacting effectively, and engaging and competing in a global environment. Students shall use digital resources in a responsible, efficient, ethical, and legal manner.
Thank you, Curtis. Um, comments or questions?
I I have one quick thing here, which is, and it might just be covered in the uh phrase. Uh, seeking knowledge and understanding, uh, but m- media literacy and differentiating between accurate and inaccurate information. Or information and miss and disinformation is something that is so absolutely necessary for successful di- digital citizenship. Uh, in this country at this time that I would think maybe articulating those might be worth doing. Unless people feel that they are covered by the uh including seeking knowledge and understanding frameworks as put forward by the state. So that might be a thing that I'll look at before we meet again as the policy committee to see if that's mentioned specifically in those frameworks. If it isn't, I would put forward that we should mention it.
Thanks, Curtis. Yeah, I I'm, you know, thank you for bringing that up, and it's something that um. Would love to hear more from, you know, when we meet again as a subcommittee. Carrie?
I would have thought it would be covered under the thinking critically part, but it might be worth naming it anyway.
Thank you, Curtis. Um, I'm gonna lose you all, so please interrupt if there there is something else that uh you'd like to say regarding this policy. But I believe we are on to policy I, J, and D C, acceptable use of digital resources. It's a little bit of a longer string of text. Um, we'll pass it on to Curtis.
Looking to see where the proposed, there we go. Uh, change to uh MASC I, J, and D C, acceptable use of digital resources. Uh, acceptable use of digital resources. The superintendent, in conjunction with the director of technology, shall develop and implement appropriate procedures to provide guidance for access to digital resources. Guidelines shall address teacher supervision of digital resources, ethical use of such resources, and issues of online privacy. In addition, procedures shall prohibit utilization of digital resources for prohibited or illegal activities. And for the use of other programs with the potential of damaging or destroying programs or data. Technology procedures shall be implemented that effectively address the following. Controlling access by minors to inappropriate matter on the internet as defined by the Children's Internet Protection Protection Act. And the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. Safety and security of minors in use of digital resources. Preventing unauthorized access, including hacking viruses and other unlawful activities by minors online. Annually, all students must agree to and sign an appropriate digital use form developed by the superintendent in conjunction with the director of technology. This form must also be signed for the parent or guardian for students under the age of eighteen. All staff must agree to and sign an appropriate digital use form prior to being granted access to digital district digital resources. Employees must use di- district resources for the purposes directly related to educational and instructional purposes. On the recommendation of the superintendent, in conjunction with the director of technology. The district shall determine when and which digital resources can be made available to the community. All guest users will be prompted to and must accept a digital use agreement prior to use. Those violating the digital use agreement will be subject to appropriate consequences.
Apologies for the the barking dogs here. Um, but uh, comments or questions? Carrie?
Yeah, just uh one, this is a minor thing, but in the paragraph that ends with students under the age of eighteen. It's supposed to read this form also must be signed by parent or guardian?
That is correct.
Okay. And I'm I'm wondering on a usage um. Perspective, the a violation of this policy would be a student using um. A website that was getting around whatever block was for that website. Um. Like if if, say, the the school was prohibiting the use of Facebook, but a student found a way to access Facebook, which students don't use Facebook, but that's just an example. Um. That, I mean, what kind of consequences are we talking about if it's something as. Potentially benign as that, there I could imagine, you know, students accessing things that are not benign. Um, getting around our our firewalls and whatever other things we have in place. What what would potential consequences look like?
The the procedures and consequence, I mean, at, when you're talking about somebody accessing something that is not benign. Um, in some situations, there are certainly reporting requirements to. Um, law enforcement, you know, like that that's the that's the far end of the spectrum.
Hmm.
Much more in line with trying to utilize Facebook when you shouldn't. Um, those consequences are laid out in the student student handbook as.
Okay.
Um, as just minor infractions, which which typically amount to probably a conversation, the first level conversation with the assistant principal. Um, and and then from there, repeat infractions have have other uh consequences. So that's, you know, it's it's akin to any other type of behavior.
Okay, and do we have ways of knowing if, you know. Illegal sites are being accessed using the school technology?
We we certainly within all of the normal ways that students would would do that. Um, at a first level, if. Um. If you're not supposed to use Facebook when you're utilizing your school-supplied Chromebook while you're at school. Um, we actually have content filtering that's that's built in that just makes it so that that's not, that's not easy. Um, if you then go and utilize a website that can act as a proxy for Facebook and navigate around that way and do things. That's where if somebody notices that you've intentionally gone around all of the all of the walls that are there. Um, that's where something like this would would come into play. Um, so we we have a first layer that is just, i- if you're not supposed to be doing it, it's difficult to do it. Um, and then there's the second layer of people noticing what what you're doing. Um, in some of those situations, quite honestly, with technology, it isn't as though we could install something that could monitor it. Because it can all be encrypted, it can all be tunneled around, but um we do certainly have layers of security and protection in place.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie, for that question. Thank you, Joe, for your response. Um, any other questions or or feedback?
I don't have a question about this, but uh, I, did someone just perhaps accidentally remove the agenda for tonight's meeting from the packet? Because it's not there now, which is weird. Uh, just because I was I was clicking on to these documents through that, I can just click on the documents themselves, but I don't, I just don't see the agenda in there all of a sudden. Anyone else seeing that?
I just reloaded and I see what you're saying. Let me see if I can.
Neat. But anyway, not not that it's your main to to what we're doing, but I thought I would raise attention to that.
Thanks, Curtis, and I just noticed the same on my end. Uh, but separately have a a link to the agenda.
But I'm good to go on to the next.
Okay, okay.
How does that even happen? Sorry, we're talking about the use of technology. How does that even happen? If everything is in here as a PDF?
The the only way to delete a a PDF uh is if you are the owner of the PDF who who put it there theoretically.
Hmm.
But then I also once.
Someone is showing us that there is a way to hack the system, I think, you know.
Whether, you know, maybe permission settings got got switched by accident, uh.
I just added a a another copy of that.
Thanks, Joe.
To to the packet folder.
Thank you. Um, we've got two uh policies remaining. Um, the next one may sound redundant. Uh, we'll hear some of the same themes that we've just talked about, but it's that policy. J I C J, Student Use of Technology in Schools. If you've got it, Curtis.
I got it.
Yeah.
Student Use of Technology in Schools. The school committee recognizes that the use of technology is an important part of students being prepared for adult life. As such, the student use of technology, part of their education, is to be encouraged. As teaching students appropriate use of technology is part of the responsibility of the district. Annually, all students must agree to and sign an appropriate digital use form developed by the superintendent in conjunction with technology staff. This form must also be signed for the parent or guardian for students under the age of eighteen. Students shall utilize digital resources in a responsible, efficient, ethical, and legal manner. Students are required to abide by the district code of conduct in their use, both on and offline of di- district digital resources. Which should be regarded as an extension of the classroom. Students are reminded that there is no expectation of privacy in the use of district digital resources. Failure to abide by district policies and procedures regarding the use of district digital resources will be met with consequences.
Thank you, Curtis. Uh, questions or or feedback? Carrie?
Is the use of um AI included in these policies, or is there going to be a separate policy around that?
I do know that MASC is currently working on. New thoughts around artificial intelligence. Right now, it's still a relatively unregulated. Area, partly because it's moving so quickly at the moment that trying to differentiate between things is, I think, challenging. Um, what is artificial intelligence, what is not, um, what is acceptable use and what is not? Um, but I expect that over the next three to five years, we'll probably see a lot more. Detailed understanding and attempt to. Uh, dictate use.
Do faculty at the middle school, high school have um guidance from our Director of Academic Technology? In terms of what to put on their syllabi and stuff like that?
Uh, yes, and and definitely, you know, in in a variety of forms. Um, we are promoting its use and in another way is not. Um, or or limiting, um expressly prohibiting its use. Um, and I think that's also something that is evolving um more quickly than most policy evolves. Um, so there's there's some level of experimentation and and just trying to make sense of of the world as well.
And if you really want to melt your brain, there's a current case right now on the West Coast. Uh, where a a a person is defending themselves against plagiarism charges. For using AI to write a document uh by claiming that what they wrote for the prompt. For the AI to use to write was their own writing and therefore is not plagiarism. So that'll be fun to see play out.
Hmm, wow.
This one, to to the math teachers out there, this is, we're gonna be fine, but good lord.
I've I've seen some eh generative AI do some math, Curtis.
That's that's why everything needs to be on paper for some of us. Some of us need you to put it on paper with your with your little hand.
Right. Um, and it it's, you know, certainly, I think educators. I'm assuming, you know, cave through, cape all the way up, uh, are certainly grappling with, and it's something that we're really struggling with at Williams. Uh. Yeah. Other comments or questions? All right, um, up next is a a new policy, Policy KDCB, District Website and Social Media.
District Website and Social Media. The school committee wishes to ensure accurate delivery of information, and as such, the Mount Greylock Regional School District will maintain a district website. And such district and s- school social media accounts as authorized by the superintendent. All such online platforms will be maintained by district staff acting in their professional capacities. Unauthorized use of district or school name is prohibited. A high priority will be placed on such platforms being accessible, frequently updated, and user-friendly.
Thank you, Curtis. Questions or or feedback? The only thing that came up in, I would maybe, one of the things, I should say, that came up in our subcommittee discussions was the potential. Uh, commitment to resource allocation to to to. For this policy to be implemented and and supported. Um, but, you know, just wanted to highlight that this could be something that the district would would need support and and insurance.
And it's also something that we already, you know, we already have a website, we already maintain various social media accounts. Um, but it is an area that's constantly evolving, and it certainly is a budget area that that can um. That can require more at some point.
I do find myself struggling with the sentence of uh unauthorized use of district or school name is prohibited. And my my editing brain says that it should say unauthorized use of district and or school names is prohibited. Because it's a policy that I I would assume the policy would govern a Greylock student or or any party. Uh, il- illegally or illicitly utilizing Williamstown Elementary School's name. And not just our own building's name.
But that's a good question. I don't know, Joe, if if our individual schools. Um. Have a separate and independent sort of mandate for managing their school websites. This this speaks to district-wide. Communication. I don't I don't know, Joe, if there's, if if. Communication. I don't, I don't know, Joe, if there's, if, if we need to amend it the way Curtis has highlighted or. If this is already embedded in, in policies elsewhere or practice elsewhere.
I, I believe that, that conversationally, when people say a district website, that, that includes that. The, the way our website is organized, the individual school buildings are, are subparts of that website. Um, so I, it, it isn't as though we maintain separate or they have a separate property. Um. That would be my initial answer.
But it's, Curtis, something I think we can just consider again when we meet as a subcommittee, you know, whether that language should be more explicit. Yeah. All right. Thank you Curtis. Oh, 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 it's just about to shut us down. Julia.
It, um, it, just a note, I don't know when we do meet again. Um.
That's some, thank you for putting that on my to-do list to reach out to you all and Carol and organize that day.
Okay.
A good question. Um. But thank you Curtis, as always. Uh, and I believe it's, we, we, we'll pass the baton back to you Christina.
Thank you Jose. Thank you Curtis for reading all those. Policies. Um, next up on the agenda, the interim superintendent report. So I turn it over to Joe.
All right, the, the first one is, is to me, it's one of the most cheery, optimistic, forward looking. Congratulatory to many people things that I can do, which is welcoming new staff. Um, we are a district that does not experience a lot of turnover. Typically. Either, either we add a position because of a, a need or we see somebody retire. Um, to move on and, and, and we, we need to hire a replacement. Um, and, and this year is, is no different in that way. Um, we are also very fortunate in that. As long as we work hard through the summer and I, and I really appreciate the work of our H R department. Um, and our building principals and assistant principals and all of the staff who participate in hiring committees. Um, that we typically open the year fully staffed. Meaning all positions that we had posted and really needed. Um, in order to move into the year have been filled and um, that is also something that I am very happy to report. Uh, the team has done. Um, thanks to a lot of hard work and we have some really wonderful people who have joined us as a result of that too. Um, that new teacher induction and, and new staff welcome. Um, it's something that started happening this week and will continue in the next week. And, and it's a highlight, I think, you know, seeing, seeing fresh faces, um, hearing their stories. And understanding the ways that we are all committed to um, better, brighter futures for all of our students. It's uh. It's, it's a great way to start the year for sure. Um, so at Lanesboro Elementary School. Um, we have uh, Malia Rand joining us in the cafeteria. Um, working in the kitchen. So students and staff will, will get to know Malia very soon. Um, Julie Sumner is joining us as a new uh, multiple language learning teacher. Um, Tom Kreen as our new music teacher at Lanesboro Elementary School. At Mount Greylock. Um, we have a group of new paraprofessionals joining us. Um, Tori Hallett. Jess Otero and Amy Stanwick. Um, we do have one more person um, that I can't name quite yet, but I think they are uh, about to. Sign on the dotted line and join us, um, which will complete our picture there for Mount Greylock for the start of the year. Um, and then at Williamstown Elementary School, in addition to welcoming. Um, Jennifer Downey as our new interim assistant principal. She had been a. Um, has, has been a teacher uh, at Williamstown Elementary School for many years, um, typically in fifth grade. Uh, um, she agreed to join us in the interim assistant principal role, which. I am really thankful for and I have heard from so many community members. Um, staff and parents guardians, um, that they also feel. Really fortunate that Jen has been willing to make that jump for this year as an interim. Um, along with Griffin LeVance, who um, earlier in the summer had agreed to serve as interim principal from his. Um, previous role as assistant principal. Um, so we have two um, new but old people in those roles that. Um, that are um, doing great work already and, and they've been, they've been working hard together for the last few weeks. Um, in addition to, in addition to them, new paraprofessionals, Eli Phillips. Um, who had been within the district in a variety of roles previously, um, has come back and joined us as a paraprofessional. Nicole LeBens and Kelly Hosner Crowley. Also joining us as paraprofessionals. And then in grade three. Cass Crozier is starting as a new teacher within third grade. Um, and Katie McDonough, starting in fifth grade. Um, Katie had served us in uh, last couple of years as a substitute teacher. Um, so she's now joining us full time as a, as a fifth grade teacher. So those are our new hires over the summer. Um, I've already enjoyed getting to know each of them a bit and, and it's going to be a great year. Um, launching a note with them, so. That's the initial update there. And then the start of this.
Yeah.
Go ahead Curtis.
All right, I, uh, a, a friend of mine, uh, who had been listening to or viewing a school committee meeting after the fact. Uh, said that oftentimes he just doesn't understand the things we're talking about and why they're. Awesome or not awesome. Uh, and this is one of those opportunities, I feel like, uh. When a person outside of this field of work hears, oh, we've fully staffed the schools before the school year starts, they're like, well duh. Uh, there are no fewer than ten districts right now who are s- looking down the barrel of. Uh, starting the school year uh, substantially understaffed. There are a couple of districts that are open now and substantially understaffed. So I think it really points to the attractiveness. Of this district, not just to the families in our communities, but to the professionals who want to work in education. Uh, that we're able to in this climate with this kind of hiring uh, happening all over the county and in upstate and southern Vermont. Um, it's really something that we were able to do that. Uh, so to, to anyone listening. Uh, in layman's terms, it is, it is no easy thing to fill all positions before a school year uh, anymore. Uh, it is, it is nothing short of miraculous. So, thank you.
Agreed. Um, one of the things that this is reminding me of that was also part of the. Previous conversation about doing the um. Superintendent search and the timing of it is that. Um, we also need to engage in a search for the um, principal. At the Williamstown Elementary School, right? And I'm just wondering, um. What that process. Will look like and that doesn't need to be a discussion now, but I think. It would be good to just be informed about that um, in the future.
Yeah, that, that'll be coming over the next couple of months, but that'll be a hire that um, that will happen. Over the course of this school year for the next school year. Um, so there's, there's no change to that plan. It's, it's the right timeline and uh. On the right path forward there. Any other questions on welcoming new staff or, or comments? So start of the school year. As much as I think for some people in some roles, the summer feels long. Um, I think for those of us in administrative roles. When you're starting out at some point in June and you're saying, here are all the things that I want to accomplish. Before the start of the new school year. Um, and then when now we are less than a week away. From the start of the new school year, it's a very short period of time and, and, and we get to enjoy. Um, I think a lot of hard work together where we know that it's our moment. Um, to try to, try to prepare in, in new and better ways for the start of the school year. Um, as we looked at. The road that was ahead of us, um, in June, July and August. Uh, we really had a focus on, on teamwork and communication. Um, embracing the wonderful team that, that we have in place and all of the ways that. Um, we could continue to improve the way we communicate with each other, but. Um, more importantly with our staff and then with our families. Um, and, and that I think has, has taken shape in. Um, a number of ways that we've held listening sessions. We've worked with people trying to understand ways that we can improve. Um, starting to look anew at policies and procedures, and I think there will definitely be some policy changes um, that we'll be proposing and bringing forward. Um, many ways that we're trying to increase communication as a part of our procedures. Um, embedded within our procedures and protocols. Uh. That was, was a big chunk of the work uh, that we undertook. And, and we've accomplished a bunch and I think over the next couple of months, we'll, we'll be bringing various presentations and highlights forward. Um, for, for what we're doing that's new, that's different, um, that's improved. But right now the focus is really on T minus six days. Um, less than that to fully welcoming all staff, but, but for the twenty eighth when students start. Um, we're, we're all excited. We're also wishing that we had another couple of weeks. Um, but I know that that's not the sentiment surely that um, students and, and families. Um, have, and I think many staff are, are excitedly already back in the building. Um, making modifications to classrooms and, and asking questions and, and working on new things. Um, so we are as ready as we will ever be. Um, and one of the comforting thoughts is that by the time uh, that we hit this point next week. Um, we'll have full houses again. We'll be, we'll be back in full operations. Um, enjoying the presence of, of all of the faces that we have within our buildings. Um, so we're. We are uh, ready and looking forward and we do have a couple of items tonight, the next couple of items on the agenda. Um, that relate to work that's been happening over the course of the summer. Um, and with the remedy hall topic, Carrie, would you, may I turn it over to you or would you prefer I?
Sure. No, I'm happy to. So. I'll do a Curtis and take one hat off and put on another. Um, I serve on the board of Remedy Hall. Um, which is a nonprofit that was established um, back in November of twenty twenty-three. Um, to provide individuals and families experiencing hardship with basic everyday personal care, hygiene items and basic life necessities. Um, one of our core values is dignity and being able to serve the population that we're looking to serve. Um, with integrity and dignity and to meet the needs of those um, in our community who have the greatest need. With all of that in mind, um, our director, Andy Bryant, um, our, sorry, our board president, Andy Bryant, um. Very much wanted to set up satellite lockers in both the public library and the middle school, high school. So. We have done that. We set up a satellite locker of remedy hall in. Public library in Williamstown, um, as well as in the teen room of the public library. Um, in Williamstown and then uh, we worked with um. Sam Rutz, the assistant principal. At Mount Greylock Middle and High School to establish a. Location and a, an actual physical locker. Um, in the, the student uh, support center. And uh, we have stocked that. Um, I have a picture. I'm happy to. Show if, if I have permission to share my screen. Um, but we've stocked that specifically with supplies that are relevant to middle and high school students. Um, hygiene and um, personal care and clothing. Um, the one thing remedy hall does not do is food. Um, we don't compete with the Williamstown Food Pantry or others that. Um, supply food um, in our towns, um, but I'll get to that in the, in the next item. Um. Do I have permission?
You should be able to share.
Thanks. Uh. Okay, can everyone see that? So this is what the, I think I just lost my head. Okay, so this is what the locker looks like. You can't quite see the doors, but it's a, you know, it's a big open locker. Or well, actually, sorry, it's the, the doors close and, but when you open it, this is what you see. And um, you know, the idea is that students um, who. Need supplies can go in and take them, right? They don't have to um, request them. They don't have, and. This is not to say, I mean, guidance supplies some things and the nurse's office supplies some things and we're working with both offices so that we're not competing in what we're supplying, but we're just trying to. Broaden um, what we can do to provide um, goods to students. Whose families may not have the money to buy toothpaste or deodorant or, you know. Other items of necessity um, in, in a given week or a given month, right? Um, questions about that? Jose?
I, I just want to say thank you to you and Andy and to all of our, you know, amazing community members who have put this together. I, I, I am, we are all so grateful. Um, if you wouldn't mind sharing with us here and, and for folks who are listening in and who might listen. Um, later, how might folks be able to contribute, you know, items that, that could go into, into the locker?
Yeah. So remedy hall is open for donations and thank you for that opportunity to acknowledge that this is a very generous community. And um, we receive donations of all sorts of. Things um, on a regular basis. Um, the hall itself is located in the uh, Meeting House Building, which is the first congregational church in Williamstown and. Um, it's right now open to um, folks who are in need of. Services and goods on an appointment only basis, but donations can be um, given at any time. And so there's a picnic table outside. Um, it's around the back of the, it has its own separate entrance. Um, there's a phone number, there's a, there's a social media page, um, and there's an email. So. Folks are welcome to um, contact me or contact Andy or email remedy hall. Um, so yeah, we're, we're open to receiving contributions at any time and, and then distributing those to the various locations. Um, the library and the school as well.
Thanks Carrie.
Yeah, thank you. So, the. The next item kind of dovetails um, with remedy hall in the sense that um. We had a, a generous member of the community reach out to remedy hall to say. We'd like to contribute. Do you know of, of, you know, what is the highest need in the community? And we had just met. With Sam Rutz to talk about the satellite locker and. She brought up that there is a great need i- in the Mount Greylock community. For um. For food, uh, for our students who are. At that highest need level. And so I'll turn that over to Joe now.
Yeah, so um. The, the way the federal and state governments operate. Um, once schools hit a, hit a certain percentage of students. Um, with a certain level of socioeconomic need. Um, they then apply additional funding to that school. Um, not necessarily to the entire district, to that school associated with. Providing free breakfast and um, potentially other opportunities throughout the school day snacks. Um. And uh, Lanesboro Elementary School uh, qualifies for the free breakfast program. Um, with federal funding, which is wonderful. And the number of students and the ways that they utilize it, it is, it is needed. It is helpful. Um, it is wonderful for how they are able to navigate their school days. Um, having had breakfast upon arrival. Um. Mount Greylock and Williamstown Elementary School do not currently qualify for that type of funding. As a result, the two schools have had their own um, ways to try to, try to navigate that. Williamstown Elementary School. Um, the uh, parents and uh. Families and staff for Wes, F S four Wes, um, formerly known as the, the Williamstown P T O. Um, has assembled a fund, um, that parents contribute to, um, parents and staff contribute to every year. Um, that funds the purchase of snacks for students so that any student is able to walk into the front office. Um, and receive a healthy snack. And receive a healthy snack at any point during the day where they need it. That's something that's been operating now at Wes for the last couple of years. At Mount Greylock, we do have some grant funding that has been associated with ensuring that. Students who are legally classified as homeless have access to additional meals and snacks. Throughout the day. That's a program that we've been able to offer over the last year, year and a half, I believe. But we have not had additional funding associated with the larger group of students. Who have, who certainly have food needs as they're entering the building every day. And as they're trying to make it through a a long school day with a lot of attention and and energy applied. That's an area where in over the last couple of years, staff have oftentimes contributed. Money and food and and snacks have been available in the front office. Staff have identified students in need and and made sure that they found them. But it's not something that we had been able to comprehensively address through a more formal program. And so this summer with with Andy and and Carrie's leadership. And with a very generous founding gift from James and Wendy Martin of twenty seven hundred dollars. That we'll be accepting in a second formally with a vote. The the school has developed and is launching on the first day of school. A program where many students who will have been identified by the student support team. On the SST there at Mount Greylock. Will be able to utilize their student ID, their school account. In the same way that any student with money loaded on to their regular school lunch account. Will be able to walk up in the cafeteria during the the early morning snack time. To be able to acquire snacks at at no charge to to them and and their households. So those will be supplied. That mode of operation avoids any stigmatism, any any kind of other nature. Of that operation. It it allows it to to run in a way where we can ensure that an increasing number of students have access. To healthy snacks as they navigate the day. For a group of students that is larger than our our current group of students within the homeless. Legal classification, we're also offering additional support through this first thing in the morning. So that as they walk in at at seven twenty five, seven thirty, that their needs will will be addressed better. Once again, that will be discreet. It'll be something where we're just able to support them better through this program. So we're currently calling it Mount Greylock Eats. If the program is fully utilized by the number of students that we think. Could really benefit, the annual cost could be right around nine thousand dollars. So this twenty seven hundred dollar gift is a big push forward. But we are going to be determining ways to to have fundraising lead to additional gifts to the school district. And there are a couple of different ways that I think we we might be able to navigate that. But that's something that's still taking shape. So it's a it's a wonderful step forward. And something that that definitely addresses a very critical need for a growing number of our students and and households.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of people don't really think about the fact that there's food insecurity in the schools. And this is now an opportunity and one of the things that Jamie is interested in doing is considering this as a matching gift. Right? And so the schools were not really allowed to go out and solicit gifts. We can receive them, which we're about to do, right? Assuming the committee votes to approve it. We can receive gifts, but we cannot go out and solicit them. But other organizations can, and other and people can, and the school can always receive gifts. So, you know, this is something that we're hoping to get community-wide support. Toward in the very near future. So I'd like to move that we accept the gift from James and Wendy Martin. Of twenty seven hundred dollars as the founding gift for Mount Greylock Eats.
I will second that.
And thank you to James and Wendy Martin. It was really serendipitous, the whole, the way the whole thing came about. And thank you to Sam for being, you know, so straightforward about the needs of the students at the school.
Any other discussion on that item? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Thank you.
Malloy, I.
Hi, Ursula. Thank you. That motion passes.
All right, shall we transition to the next agenda item? An update on advisory committees. We have two advisory committees that per our conversations during the retreat and work previously. In the spring and summer, we are working on right now. One is a diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging advisory committee. Advisory to the superintendent type committee. That group is is taking shape, representing a wide variety of backgrounds and perspectives. And and ways to ways to do their work. The group will initiate meeting over the next couple of weeks. With the hope being that we will get a request for proposals. Around work related to diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Where the prioritized aspects will come out of the conversations of that multifaceted group of. School committee members, staff members, parents and guardians. And so over the next couple of months, we will have that RFP developed. We will get it out. We will be able to select a vendor or vendors representing. Highly experienced, objective outside consulting capability for the district. Hopefully, they will then do their work over the course of January, February, March, April. Preferably feeding into budget cycle for for next year with some of that work. And in concluding work in its entirety for this committee before the end of this school year. With the idea being that the conclusion will have a detailed action plan. That my office, as well as the school committee, can endorse, put into play. Both operationally and and financially. For a variety of very concrete improvements that I think will be very, very visible and apparent. From that work that this group and and the broader district will do. So that's a quick update on the DEIB advisory committee related to that, if it's okay for me to keep it within this. Is that we had received an offer of sixty six thousand dollars. From the Williamstown Select Board and its ARPA funding for this work. We knew that in order to do the work as well as we as we possibly could. That we would probably be looking for additional funding. So a a number of folks, Carrie, once again, had had led the way in many aspects. Have gone out and started to approach potential grantors of additional funding. We were fortunate in that Williams College heard that call for additional funding. And recently decided to allocate twenty eight thousand dollars towards this work. By the district. And so the additional agenda item here is to recognize and receive. The grant of twenty eight thousand dollars from Williams College for the work of the DEIB advisory committee. And so with appreciation, I'd love to put that forward for being moved and seconded and voted.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
And then I'd just like to add that, you know, the community feedback that we got around the DEIB work. You know, that was. Instrumental, I think, in signifying to the college that this work was important. For the wider community and also for the college community, the faculty and staff. And folks who, you know, attend the college as well, that this work is critical to. You know, supporting. Those folks. So, yeah, just wanna again, thank the community for the feedback. And for providing that kind of. Perspective on the need for the equity work.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that motion?
I just have a question. Joe, do we also need to formally accept the ARPA funding or are we not ready to do that yet?
We. I I'm not sure, but I will determine whether or not that's an item where we should formally accept it. In in the same way that we do. I mean, it makes sense to me that we should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Thank you. That vote passes.
And thank you to Williams College for for the gift. It will be put to good work.
So the second advisory committee would be related to curriculum program study review. For Mount Greylock Regional School. That is a group that is going to take shape a little bit more slowly here as we enter the school year. We've wanted to make sure that we determine the best way to to fully incorporate teacher input. Staff input within Mount Greylock Regional School. So as we. As we determine time and effort commitments from curriculum leaders, department heads within the school. We've been pinning down what kind of, what kind of shape this committee can take. We will be, I will be continuing to reach out to some parents and guardians within the community. Community to try to identify who we can have best come in from that angle as well. So I think over the next couple of weeks, that will take much more structured shape. And once again, the the idea is that we will initiate work as quickly as possible after that. With the combination of school committee, staff, parents, guardians and and the district office collaborating. On evaluating. How we can best approach. Our annual reviews of program of study and curriculum for Mount Greylock. And and especially how to think about the challenges that we'll face with potentially increasingly tight budgets. As we remain an excellent school and and push ahead in every way possible. So there will be more coming there in the coming months as well to the school committee. Any questions on that?
I don't have a question on that, but if I can go back a couple steps to the start of the school year. We, I hope this is okay. We have heard all the amazing things that the technology team is doing, the curriculum team is doing. The principals are doing, everyone's doing to get the inside of the school ready for the students. I got an opportunity to go up to the Mount Greylock campus, the middle and high campus. And the greens are stunning. Like, I was just blown away. And I know we've had a great kind of weather year, but I just wanna shout out to the building and grounds crew. Because my goodness, it's as a former soccer player, I would be so excited to tear up those fields and do some sliding tackles.
Brandon Kraus, Ryan Joppick, and all of the custodians who who find time during their day to contribute to that work. Have done a really miraculous job over the last few years. The school district has all at once saved money over over previous models of operation. And really brought our fields and our our outdoor capabilities to a level that that we've never had before. So the the combined effort to both save money and do better work is it's really. It's been a lot of fun to see them them grow and to see the campus benefit, which is great.
Might be worth giving a brief update on the track and field project.
Field and track project continues to be on time, under budget. As of right now, if you come to the campus, please do not step foot onto the track. That is a message that went out to the community over the last couple of weeks. Because while it looks like a wonderful place to run around in circles, it is it is currently an asphalt form. The company that that then applies the the rubberized track coating on top of that. Will be in operation, I believe, this coming week. The the timeline there is that first you need to put down asphalt. It needs to cure for a period of time. And only after that can you then put what will be the the formal track surface down. So it's especially important that people stay off it, even though it looks like we're really close to being done. And it's true, we are, because over the next two months, all of the finishing touches will be put put into place. Coatings and and markings on the track. The as soon as that is done, and we can have water spraying everywhere temporarily. Not while the track is going down. The the topsoil layer and the sod will be put down on the field interior. And then we'll be going through a a pretty intense watering regiment to get it off to its best start. And while that is happening, the outside disturbed area will be cleaned up. And the final asphalt walkways, things like that will be be poured and put into place. Those are those are just awaiting the opportunity to work your way out from the project site and be done. So if all continues to go according to the plan, by the end of this fall, everything will look complete. We will let it rest and and be prepared probably for track and field to have access in the spring. And depending upon how the how the sod takes, how the weather treats the sod. We we might have lacrosse playing on that interior field in the spring. Or we might need to wait to have it first played on in the fall. It all depends upon a combination of nature and nurture of the of the sod.
Very exciting. Thank you, Joe, for that update.
So the next item, because we're all changing hats tonight, is the business office report. Substitute pay rates. We have new updated proposed substitute pay rates within your packet. We are looking for a vote to approve the subrates as proposed. To the the green box within that packet item. Our intent here is to. A, in some cases, continue to make sure that we are. Offering rates that are competitive with with what we have for permanent hires on step one. Of our various contracts and in other situations, trying to make sure that we. Continue to have or improve our fortunes when it comes to being able to recruit and retain substitutes. In a variety of positions. All of this is based on looking at both other school districts within our general area. But also what other competing employers are doing within other spaces. To to try to attract substitutes. So all of this is was developed by our HR administrator, Jonathan Nopper. And 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 I've contributed as well. So it's that's how it's come before you. And I would highly recommend that we adopt it if you are willing.
Julia?
I'll, I have a question. Why don't I move that we adopt this?
Okay, Julia moves. Do I have a second?
Um, how does this I change match or? Um, how does this, I, change, match or not match any assumptions that had been in the budget?
Um, a- all of this lives within, wi- within where we are within the budget in terms of the budget lines. We often, um, and, and I'll be frank with this, we often e- end up in situations where if we cannot fill. Substitutes using our subrates as we have approved. We end up finding more costly ways to go about that. Which include overtime or asking a paraprofessional to. Not work in their paraprofessional role, but instead to work as a substitute teacher. So all of this fits within the, within the budget and in some ways it actually improves our ability. To utilize our, um, less expensive means of, of filling positions.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Any other discussion or questions for Joe on the substitute pay rates?
Do we, do we know how this compares to other schools in Berkshire County or those who are competing with us for substitute positions?
W- within our, uh, immediate neighbors, it, it puts us, or it keeps us. Above them in, in each regard. What that does for us is it, is it does make it so that our, our list of interested substitutes. Remains healthier than neighboring school districts. Just to be blunt about it. When you look at starting pay rates, um, that we're seeing within many businesses in the area. We're, we're just trying to keep up with them. You, you, you find a lot of times that for-profit companies are able to offer higher rates than, than many others. So we're kind of, we're doing the balancing act between, um, trying to make sure that, that we are the brightest spot within the municipal world. But, uh, but just trying to keep up with, um, other, other potential employers within the substitute world. So, um, that's where we are.
Thanks, Joe, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Thank you, that motion passes.
Right, the next, uh, and. Final lengthy, uh, not lengthy, final voting item on, on the agenda. We have a pair of postage machine leases, these come before you because they are, are. They are agreements that are longer than three years, which triggers, uh, requiring the school committee's approval. They are five-year leases, um, that we recommend, they, they keep the status quo. Believe me, I am one of the champions within the district of trying to avoid postage wherever possible. But that's not always possible, and so these postage machines, um, do need to be present. Within the schools for the ways that they operate. So, um, while I'd love to minimize their use, um, they, they are definitely needed, so I would love if you were to approve these, uh, this pair of leases.
Julia, move, still have a second? Curtis, second? Any further discussion on those items? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Thank you, that motion passes. Thank you, Joe, for those updates. Um, next up, upcoming meetings, we have our regularly scheduled school committee meeting for September on the 12th at six PM. We touched on the October seventeenth or the October meeting, which normally would fall on the 10th. Um, but it conflicts with a Mount Greylock Regional School concert, so we're hoping to move back to the seventeenth with the committee's thumbs up. Jose, does that work for you? Okay, great, Ursula, thumbs up?
I think so.
Okay. Alright, so the, the October school committee meeting will be October seventeenth at six PM, thank you.
Christina, could I just, oh, go ahead, Curtis.
No, you first.
I just wanted to ask, um, Joe, when do you envision the next finance subcommittee meeting being? Cause I think we had talked about having them prior to the school committee meetings, but just wasn't sure about the timing.
If the subcommittee is amenable to a meeting prior to the September school committee meeting. I think would, would be beneficial and would work. But we might.
Identical question, Jose, for you for, uh, policy and governance.
Ah. So we don't want to use the same slot for those. Finance could go at four and you guys could go at five, but if Joe has to attend all of them, that's a really long night.
I don't think Joe has to attend the policy and governance.
Okay.
You're welcome to, but also.
But Julia, Julia has, I has, I think on the verge of saying something.
You've gotten so good at reading Julia's face.
It's like open book. I, I'm trying, I'm just thinking about the conversation, I thought there was something to check with the attorneys on, but maybe not.
There, there is, there is, and it could be that, Joe, we might ask you. We'll have to, the particular policy, it's regarding, um, public comment. Uh, and what. You know, in our current format, uh, what kind of language is permissible or, or, or not? So Joe, it could be that we ask you for some written feedback, I think. It seems like a prior life, we had a plan to consult with our, uh, attorneys. For some feedback on, on what that language should read.
I already have from a few months ago, plenty of input from our legal counsel. Maybe Jose, you and I could meet just to try to make sure that.
Okay.
I know what you're looking for and then, um, I, I, I would, I would love to meet with all of you, so I'll. I, I, I'll be there, but I'll certainly get you information ahead of time, so. If, uh, the, the one thing that I would suggest is that, uh, given that. We might have this group of, of technology-related policies that will be going into the September meeting for vote. It might be nice to have the policy subcommittee meet. In advance enough that the final versions can go into the packet rather than being done a couple hours before.
So going back to your question, Curtis, I'll just have Carol reach out to us all and, and see if we can find a, a date in our calendar. The week before, hopefully.
I, I have an email, uh, drafted here that I'm gonna send to the two of you that just has three chunks of time on three different days. Between now and then, just on the off chance that we all have one of those, and it's not the day of the meeting hours prior.
Okay.
Send that to you once the meeting is done.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm gonna snatch the five PM on September 12th slot for the finance subcommittee. Ursula, does that work for you?
Yep, I think that should be okay.
Alright, thanks.
Look at you guys solving all the things, so proud of you.
Honestly, that's because I can't make the five o'clock before the regular meeting, I have volleyball, cause we're there now.
Yay, alright. Um, I do not have any other items for discussion, any agenda requests for our next school meeting? Okay.
I, I had brought up an item request a couple of months back, but it's been very tumultuous since then, so I just kinda left it there. But I did have an inquiry into how to access athletics data in terms of the demographics, the same way we do for our student body in general. Just to see how, how the benefits are spread out amongst the, the population that serves. So I don't know how to move forward that, if that, if I just need to email Lindsay and be like, how do I find data? Or like what, what to do to move that forward, but I, I put a pin in it for a couple of months because chaos. And I'd like to move forward with that, uh, at some point when it's not chaos. So when we're all dead, probably.
If, i- if you email me with the different slices of data that you're. You know, demographics to me can be a, there could be a lot of different demographics, but. I- if you have a sense of what you're looking for, if you let me know, I can figure out the best way to get that to you. And, and then, you know, make it available for an agenda item as needed.
Absolutely, and I also have a draft ready to respond to you about when to one-on-one meet for the DEIB group and maybe we can dovetail those together. Yay.
Awesome.
We'll meet during the meeting about meeting.
Very productive.
Great, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Julia makes the motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Curtis, second? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Thank you, that most, motion passes, we are adjourned at eight twenty PM.
Thank you, Joe.
You all.
Thanks, everyone.
Everybody.
Good night.
Alright, let me know when we're starting the search party for Steve.